And I'm going to admit everybody in the waiting room.
Do we have a large group today?
Almost 200.
That registered. Now, when you did that, Colleen, my agenda that I had up on my other screen disappeared.
I got it.
So no one wants to talk because we're being recorded?
We're just letting people in who have their videos on. So, anyone that, if you've logged in, welcome, but if you wouldn't mind turning your video off because it used up a lot of bandwidth, and we want to make sure that your presentation is as good as possible. Thank you very much.
Hello, everybody, and welcome to, my name is Colleen Stovall, and I'm the Director of Programs and Special Events for AIA Miami, and I'd like to welcome you to today's Town Hall 5. Before I begin, I'd like to ask that you turn off your video cameras and your audio in order to save on bandwidth, because around 200 people in this meeting today. And just to get started, I think I'm going to put on a little quick poll. Please do your answers now, and we'll share them in just a few minutes. And it's just a real quick, simple poll.
Colleen, you can, you can turn off all video and all audio from everybody in the meeting as you are the host.
Thank you.
But we still have a few people that have their video on, even though we've turned it off, so.
I'll turn them off.
Okay.
I'm going to stop the poll in five, so if you're going to answer, do it now, and I'll stop it in five, four, three, two, one. Okay, there we go, in this quick poll. And here's the results. Now, I'd like to introduce the Executive Director for AIA Miami, Cheryl Jacobs.
Hi, everybody. Welcome to our fifth in a row Town Hall, Wednesday Town Halls. Thank you all for participating. We have a huge group today, so we most likely will not be able to get to all of your questions at the end. Remember that we're following our format that we've had, that our Q and A will happen at the end. So I'm going to introduce our speakers after I bring to you our AIA Miami 2020 President, Daphne Gori of Gori Matute, Co-Founding Principal, who's going to tell you a little bit about what we've been up to.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for joining us here today. As President of AIA Miami, I'm really excited and honored to be serving here as part of this presentation. And we are always looking for ways to serve our members and serve the community, and holding these Town Hall meetings is one of the things that we're doing. Of course, your input is vital to us. We're here to serve you, so we ask you to answer any surveys that you may receive by email or during this Town Hall meeting. Your feedback is important to us. And as AIA President, I'd like to just share with you the few key things that our group has been doing. We are constantly looking out for the profession. AIA Florida is, has been very successful in defending our profession against the threat of any deregulation, as well as protecting how architects get work through the Competitive Consultant Negotiation Act. And that is two big wins that we had earlier this year. If you're interested in networking with other architects and designers and contractors and team building, I highly encourage you to join AIA either as an Allied member or as a full-blood member. You do not have to be a Registered Architect. You can be an Associate Architect. And I guarantee whether if you're an employee or a business owner, you're going to get a lot of value out of it. So I'll turn it over back to Cheryl, so she can begin with the introductions of our presenters. Thank you.
Thanks, Daphne. So I'm very happy to bring to you three people that I've come to know and that I, that represent different-sized firms and different kinds of projects that I thought would be terrific in sharing this information with you. So in no particular, except I guess last name alphabetical order, Jason Hagopian, AIA, who's a Principal at Sal Design Group, now the Miami Center for Architecture and Design Vice President and former AIA Miami President. Next is Adriana Yeagerman, PE and BA. She's a Senior Principal and BC Managing Leader of StanTech Consulting Engineers. And then last but not least, but he's always last because his last name starts with a Z, Bernard Ziskovich, FAIA, Founding Principal of Ziskovich Architects. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, ass.
I'm going to go right into the questions. We'll, we'll do this as a conversation, and feel free anytime to pop in. And I'm going to ask once again for anyone that's on the call to please close your video so that it doesn't affect the bandwidth. So as professional service providers, we sell the intangible. And many times procurement decisions are made by relationships. It's easy to send a picture of a project or a list of accomplishments, but we all know that relationships are really important. So to that end, what kind of adjustments, it's a big, open-ended question, but what kind of adjustments are you making? I'm going to start with Adriana.
So in particular, with this situation, we've started to focus more on thought leadership and creating content to be able to reach out to our clients with a level of depth that we can showcase the experience and the multidisciplinary team that we have, you know, as a global firm. So, for example, we created a four-part series, a global view of design and urban design planning for COVID-19. So, you know, we've been, like you said, I mean, the network face-to-face opportunities obviously now are limited. And even the Zoom meetings, there's so many you can, you can do in a day, and how do you connect on a personal level? So right now, the focus for us has been really targeting our existing clients and helping each other come out of this the best way possible. So how can we take this challenge and create an opportunity together to improve the spaces that we're designing? So that was really our first approach in such a short amount of time.
So I think this is a question actually that all three of you can address. Jason?
Yeah, I mean, we've, we have the, maybe the benefit of being a kind of a smaller firm, and I think being, being nimble and having to already be sort of adapted to the working remotely, which we've been doing for actually the last couple of years, kind of gave us a little bit of a head start. And we, but we have had to adjust things, of course. Things like the way we meet people, how we meet people, all of those sort of random connections that were part of the way that we create new business aren't really happening anymore. So we're developing new ways to do that, creating our own, our own small kind of round tables where we're trying to connect kind of leaders, and maybe not necessarily leaders, but people that would never normally connect in a forum that we control, that we continue to introduce people to people. Yes, we're all attending tons of Zoom meetings, of course, but it's kind of what you do after that. And we're being really conscious to make, you know, keep track of who we've been talking to and who we've been meeting and hearing talk on these Zoom meetings, and then reaching out in a very personal way. That's one thing that we find it's encouraging us to do more of, is we're doing a lot of phone, phone calls, and of course, video connection, but just the fact that you have to reach out more, I think, in a concentrated effort, has been, has been a little bit of a change for us, but it's, it's actually been in good, in a way.
I guess, one thing is, I think that we in this profession, in this particular moment in time, it's the first recessionary involvement that I've ever had in my career, where the architects are not the first ones hit economically. So I think we, we have the benefit of entering into this timeframe with backlog and work that is thankfully continuing. So that gives us an opportunity to make sure that, someone who used to be my marketing person once told me, "The, the client that you have is, is your best and most important market." So we've been really focusing on making sure we pay a lot of attention to the, to the backlog and the work that we have ongoing. The second thing is social media. Our staff is set up to be very active and involved so that everyone is so tied to their screen time and their digital world that social media, I think, is a great opportunity for all of us as architects. And then there's really the, the aspect that I think we'll probably be talking about on the phone, which is, at different points in career, how do different firms address entering new markets? How do they address keeping markets that they have? How do you take this time that, almost in a counterintuitive way, what we're talking a lot about is laying groundwork for, for things that are coming up, not only focused on what we're already doing. So I think the social media, more than anything, is our outreach. But truthfully, because of the diversity of work, we have a lot of different people within the firm that have a lot of screen time, I would say FaceTime, but it's actually screen time these days with our existing clientele and, and people that are getting referred to us.
Yeah, you know, you, you, you did address or start, just hint at, one of my questions, and that is, what do you see is the long-term effect on getting new work? Adriana?
Um, I think the work is going to come. I mean, you know, I don't think the approach to getting new work will defer that much. I think what's going to defer is our ethos of design. And I think it's actually an amazing opportunity where, you know, this crisis, in a way, is acting as a tipping point to people understand or, or, or value, the values that us as designers and architects have been trying to progress for so long, and it's been so slow to change, right? So I don't believe, you know, I think that hopefully we will be, I think there's nothing we've tasted human interaction. And if there's something that we've learned in this crisis, it's going back to our humanity and understanding people as people. So I think the people connection would still, nothing will replace that. We'll go back to that. But I think it's really the approach of how we're going to see new projects, how we're going to see design from now on, that I think this crisis is really going to change, and hopefully for a long time.
Well, you know, we're, we are going to have another discussion about that in the not-too-distant future, about how design is of buildings and, and public spaces are going to change. What do you think, Jason, in terms of a long-term effect on new work?
Well, I, I think, obviously, in-person, you know, spontaneous meetings that happen, maybe like at Networkers and things, until that all starts happening again, those things are going to be, those things aren't going to happen. So I think, like Bernard had mentioned, we're being really proactive on being very aggressive with staying in contact with our, our, our current clients and any potential clients. We're definitely focusing on, you know, our RFQ, RFP game right now. I mean, those are still, you know, being, being issued, and we're really being cognizant of getting those things into the queue. I think project types are gonna, you know, similar to my, the fellow panelists, our offices work on many different types of projects and in project sectors. And I think we're going to see some shifts, I think, from some sectors are gonna maybe slow down or change more than others, and other sectors, I think, are gonna, are gonna, gonna increase. So, and I think the types of projects will, will change. I mean, for us, we see it's a, right now, it's a definite correlation to, to money. I mean, let's face it, if, if, if our clients aren't bringing in any money, you know, we do a lot of work in the retail sector and hospitality sector, some, some things are going to slow. I think, like, like Bernard had mentioned, some of the effects for our industry, I think we will see manifesting themselves maybe a little bit more in the third and fourth quarter, which is why this, this panel discussion is so important, because we all have to really be creative on how we're going about building, building our pipeline right now. That's, so, so I think there'll always be work. I just, I just think we have to be really creative with how we go about it and, and creating it, I think, too. You know, we have to be there to help our clients see how they can get projects going. That was part of our initial push way in the beginning, was everybody kind of stopped everything right away. And then we, our team was very proactive with reaching out and kind of reinvigorating things, and that's been very successful for us.
I think, Cheryl, one of the, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, go ahead.
That I said is exciting, in a way, about what we're living, is that our network, you know, we, we would consider our network our local network, but we have proven to ourselves in the last month and a half that our network can go beyond, right? The, the argument to a client that you have to assign a project because you're local or because, you know, you're minutes away from the site or you're minutes away from the client. I think this is giving us an opportunity to see our network a lot wider than what we used to see before. So there's the social media, like Bernard was saying, and other outreach avenues might be more suitable for that kind of wider network.
I think that what, you know, Adriana's point is really well-taken, because in a digital world, physical proximity doesn't mean a whole lot. But the reality, I do think, is that projects do have a physical reality. And I think that, that more than anything at this time, it kind of reminds me of after 9/11, how the world changed into an obsession about security. Going to the airport, driving around, going anywhere, it suddenly changed dramatically in daily life. And I think that the, the future for us as architects in this particular scenario will evolve over time, like Jason says. I don't think it's going to be immediate, because people have no way of operating other than the way we've been operating for the moment. But I do think that the focus on health and, and how design can impact health is going to, is going to lead into a situation where people make their decisions about who they hire and how they go about their projects, much more based on personal trust and value assessments of what you stand for than, and maybe this is wishful thinking, more than the, the cost of the fee or some of the other elements that, that, that go about these things. So I, I think that we're always going to live in a cost-sensitive environment in terms of the practice that we have. But each of us has built a reputation based on our own internal values. And I think that those values and that aspect of mutual trust, not just headed toward the designer, but the, the architect towards the client as well, are going to come into play because we're, we're reaching a world, like, like Jason says, I mean, how do you go into a store in the near future and be willing to try on clothing? How do you go to a restaurant and not feel anxiety about who you're sitting next to? Those are issues that are, are going to be important in our marketing effort, because clients are going to be really interested in what our viewpoint is on how we help them solve those problems. Otherwise, they have no real business to speak of. And then you start entering into the age conversation. You know, how do people over 60, or whatever the number is, feel comfortable getting out into the world? Because the truth is, as soon as what people call opening up the economy happens, we know that all the college kids and the 30-somethings are going to be out there right away, dying to have a big party. But the 60 and 70-somethings, maybe not so much. So, you know, I think that these are challenges that impact social issues, but I think they're also really going to be impacting our design profession in terms of how people feel about our ability to solve those problems.
That's really true. And, you know, Jason, you mentioned the RFQ and RFP process. And have you seen any changes to the actual, yet, and, and do you anticipate to the actual procurement process when it comes to maybe public work and private work?
Um, that's a, that's a really good question. I have to say, my, and all three of us on the panel do both public and private work. So our personal experience, I thought for sure there was going to be like a, a complete kind of meltdown on the public sector. I know everybody, I, I don't know, but I, but I've actually been pleasantly surprised, to be honest with you. I think there's still plenty of RFQs and RFPs being, being issued, at least for, for the work, type of work that my office does, on the, on the, on the public and private side. I think the projects we're working on in the public sector, surprisingly, our, our contacts, our projects are still moving ahead. They're all, of course, working remotely. I have noticed a little bit of challenges when it comes to, as in many public projects, you need multiple approvals from, from many people in many departments sometimes. And that process of making that happen has gotten a little bit cumbersome. We've, we've noticed that they've, there's been sort of like, hey, can you meet, can you do a presentation for us on Friday? That's when the director is available. And there's been a little bit, we've had to be a little bit more spontaneous and nimble. But we've been able to keep all of our public projects, we're working on some things with Miami-Dade County, City of Miami Beach, City of Miami. All of those projects are continuing to move forward. We're seeing a little bit of changes in someone in some of the building departments, some good changes, to be honest with you, and, and some that are, where things are slowed down a little bit, because they're not processing residential permits as quickly as commercial permits. But I've actually seen some things speed up due to the electronic permitting process. So I'm optimistic that the public sector will, will stay robust. I think funds and capital expenditures are in, are in place and already allocated for 2020. So I'm hoping things, you know, maybe 2021 is going to be a little bit more of a challenge. But again, we're keeping our eyes out and on all of our channels and working with our partners in the industry to make sure we submit as, as many qualification packages that we feel we're suited for.
I see a note from Daphne that City of Miami just moved to BitSync with 100% electronic upload of RFP submittals. I'm, I'm sure a lot of other agencies will do something similar. And as you guys know, we had some really great programs with the county and the city in terms of, you know, moving projects forward. But Adriana, what about you in terms of procurement?
So our college projects are more on the Department of Defense side, and we have some IDACs, which are similar to MSAs, for the next four or five years. And we're, we are seeing actually a push to start some of those projects sooner. Some of the things we know were coming in the pipeline in three, four years are actually being pushed to start this year. So, like Jason was saying, surprisingly, we're seeing more of a pickup of, of work than, than a slowdown. But it is also a different entity. We've also worked with FEMA and the Corps of Engineers on the COVID-19 efforts. So we've taken some of the, the, the conference centers and converted COVID hospitals. We did that in Denver and in Texas. So we've been able to leverage our experience in multiple sectors to be able to also activate ourselves more in the public sector as well. So that, it's been good for us.
That's great. You know, it, it's true that in some areas, they really haven't skipped a beat in terms of the process, that they went, had been starting to go to electronic procurement anyway. So the, the hope is, I think, that most agencies that made you submit electronically and, you know, 170 copies of the same thing, will, will stop doing that now. That, that, that would be a positive.
But I think, I think the verdict is still out yet. I don't know about my colleagues, but we're seeing, we're as busy as we ever were, like everyone else is saying, in terms of submittals of RFPs, RFQs, all that stuff. We're working with our agencies. One thing we haven't yet had a lot of experience with is interviews. I think that the interview process is that 10, 15, 20 minutes where you have an opportunity to take multimillion-dollar projects and explain in 35 seconds why yours is the best firm. And I think that that process is still not visible to me. I don't, I can't really predict it. I think that there's a lot of, you know, if, if I was in the position of making decisions about that, I think I would rely more heavily on the submittal than the interview, which is the opposite of the way it has been. With the exception of DoD work and federal work, like Adriana's talking about, you know, at the local level, the county, the city, the institutions, it's that moment in time that you're in front of the panel that establishes the rapport and the confidence and the trust. I don't know, for us, how that's going to really play out among architects digitally, where basically, like, right here, everybody on the screen is two-dimensional. And it's, it's a different, it's a different thing, making those selections. So I think, we still don't know that, but that's going to be a very interesting component part if this continues on this way for a long time. Or imagine trying to make an interview with a face mask. Those, those are things that could become differentiating in a whole other way than we're used to.
That's true. And I, I have a question that's just kind of came up. And I I I have a question that's just kind of came up out of the discussion. But in terms of interviews, I'm curious of the three of you, do you rehearse? And do you do you rehearse? And then do you feel that because maybe doing the interview over the phone or via computer, your pitch has to be elevated? Adriana?
Very difficult question, Cheryl. I hadn't paid attention.
Do you rehearse?
We rehearse. We rehearse. But I mean, like, like Bernard was, I think that the for us, the most valuable part or one of the most valuable part of the of the interview is the question and answer section where you actually get to, they get to to really test who you are outside of what you could have rehearsed. And I think that personal side, it becomes very difficult. It's very intimidating than, you know, sitting in front of a screen from both sides, for the people that are trying to interview and for the interviewees. So I think so far, everybody's a little apologetic of how things are going, because everybody's giving everybody the benefit of the doubt that they just, we haven't had enough time to to figure this out. But I agree with Bernard, the way that this is going to progress is is, I'm curious to see.
I I I don't think any of us can really predict. We can guess and hope and plan, but obviously, this is uncharted territory.
You can see right here that, you know, I don't know about everyone else's screen. I have gallery mode. And you basically look at everybody's face and and you can have a conversation. I think this works pretty well for conversation. But you have fifteen or twenty minutes to present your 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 pitch, and you're looking at deadpan faces. That's not, that's not a moment that that I'm looking forward to. You know, I mean, for me, as you know, I don't rehearse personally, but we do a lot of planning. So the idea of going in and trying to present your key points is is going to go through, you know, probably some form of nuclear escalation process among all of us, because you're going, each of us is going to be searching for the best way that we can use digital in order to make an impression. And that's the part that's so, I guess, unknown or interesting is a way to say it, but I'm not so much interested as I'm I'm concerned about it, because the more that that the relationship aspect dissipates and it tends toward the digital, the more disconnected we get from the reason that we got into this profession in the first place. So I'm, you know, like, like, like now, I mean, it's great to go outside and have hardly any cars, and you hear the birds, and all of us, I'm sure, have experienced kind of the benefit of living in South Florida during this time. People aren't as stressed out. I mean, you you can go outside. I see parents letting their kids ride their bikes. Once this all comes back and we go back to this rat race, you know, I think that the the impact on on health and wellness and presentation and interviews and all these things, I'm hoping there's some change, because I I feel in some ways really good about the some of the impacts that slowing things down has had, those of us that that are really care about environmental issues. I mean, it's great to feel like the planet's getting a breather. I mean, it's amazing to see pictures of LA with a blue sky and Venice with clear water and, you know, makes you wish that we were somehow enlightened enough to take advantage of the good points and build them into the future. And I think as architects, that's, that's a big part of the marketing ideas, that we need to, we need to be the leaders in that aspect of respecting and enhancing the natural environment in the things that we're promoting, whether it be health or wellness or schools or retail or whatever it may be. There are certain things we can talk about, I think, now, that are a big part of what we should be talking about in our marketing efforts independently, that that can help enlightened our clients into a different way of looking at the future. And I mean, that's my personal interest anyway, and I think a lot of us are interested in those things.
And along those lines, Jason, what kind of new approaches do you see evolving in terms of public clients and learning about projects that are coming up?
Well, I think for for us, it's kind of altering some of the things we've already been doing, of course, but also knowing that we have to be a little bit more aggressive, that things aren't just, you know, just going to sometimes appear as they do at times. We are having meetings as a team every week to kind of go over, you know, an idea, new strategies, or just kind of to kind of, you know, do what architects do and get creative about how we go about, you know, ferreting out what what's out there. And even like, like Bernard alluded to, kind of, you know, motivating clients, new clients, existing clients to perhaps a new, a new type of work or something that don't even really, aren't really necessarily thinking about. You know, we're going to get past this point, whatever point this is right now, and in six months or a year, it's going to be another point. And like you said, Cheryl, none of us really know what it's, what what life will be like in a year, you know, or six months or eighteen months. So I'm always challenging my staff, you know, as architects and designers, we're we're uniquely qualified, you know, we're we're the most creative, industrious people out there. So if anybody is prepared to 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 think creatively and find new methods and solutions to issues we're having right now, it's it's us. You know, we have to be there for our, for our clients, for potential clients. You know, we we're the ones that can help. We're the, we're the ones that can help help them through these complicated, very, very complicated times. So I'm sure Adriana and Bernard and myself, we're all gathering, you know, we're constantly gathering information, using our past experiences, our past educations, our, you know, always looking to kind of think of how we can get through this, this current situation that we're in. We're always thrown new and challenging situations, whether it's, you know, okay, now everyone's going to go from cat to rabbit, you know, like all of a sudden, it can be mundane things, but we have to adapt. We don't really have a choice. Industry changes how people work. You know, first, everything was, you know, cubicles, now it's open office, now it was collaboration. Well, now what is it? You know, I mean, so that's that's our role. It's our responsibility, I think, to be the the ones that that lead this. I mean, yes, we can take cues from industry leaders, certainly, you know, Marriott, American Airlines, Carnival Cruise Lines, they're all being very aggressive with ways they can get back to work, because they're not working right now. They're not making any money. So, but we have to be there, you know, as leaders in our, in the industry to help, to help these, our clients, to help these companies, you know, get through all of their design concerns, their their space planning concerns, whatever those are. We don't, and again, we don't have all the answers, but we certainly have an education and a thought process and a methodology for coming up with those solutions.
That's really, that's really true. Architects should always be at the forefront of developing new ways to to design, to do business, to deal with the the ever changes in in our environment. I just want to take a minute to ask, to let everybody know, in just a few minutes, we're going to start our Q and A. So if you have questions, you can send them to me or to Colleen on the chat, and either she or I will read them to our speakers. So please feel free to start that now. And so what do you think is the most important thing that you can share with our audience in terms of of business development and marketing and ways to look to the future? Adriana?
Well, I think the most important thing to remember is that it is all about people, right? And the effects of this pandemic has reminded us of our humanity and that we need to keep seeing people as people. So we look at business development as a relationship of people, but we also see our work as a reflection of our people. So I think, you know, seeing kids in the background on a on a conference floor, and there has been so many other ways, so many ways now that we've realized and we're, it feels like we're on this together, that it made us humble. And I think that hopefully that's something that would make us more sensitive again to what Bernardo was saying, Bernard, in the sense of the environment and and the spaces that we create. So I think that the lesson learned from this pandemic is.
Okay, we need to make sure you're all muted. Thanks.
So I think it's really going back to our humanity and 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 going back to to the essence of everything that we do, which is the people. That's, I think, our, my biggest takeaway of this right now.
Great. Bernard?
Well, I agree with Adriana. I think it's always about the people and the the way in which people have stepped up. I'm sure all of us in our firms with the people that we relate to, it's really awesome. But from a business development point of view, I think, I think this is, it's it's that glass half empty, half full kind of argument. I think there's a lot of opportunity here. And and I think that when we begin to use our creativity in our imagination, I think our 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 value goes up. The challenge is, we're not feeling it perhaps as much as we may in the next two or three quarters, like Jason said. And there is a point that we should really be focusing in on how do we do our groundwork now. So that's what I think is the, is the business development message of this moment, is this is the time to project what might be happening six, nine months from now, a year from now, and how do we begin to put our effort into something that we have the track record and the and the foundation to to present, so that as as the economy begins to change, hopefully it it goes right back to being red hot. But if it doesn't, and it seems likely that it won't, we need to, we need to project the future. So now's the time to to be doing the groundwork to make sure that we don't just do scattershot marketing to go after whatever, whenever. And plus, a lot of us are still really quite busy, and we don't have the resources to to be taking on whatever might be happening. So it's a good moment to think about how we target, how we assess our own strengths, and how we use them to begin to lay a foundation for what's coming up in the future. I think that's the most important thing we should be doing now.
Jason?
Yeah, I mean, I I completely echo Bernard and and Adriana's sentiments there, for sure. I mean, we're going to learn a lot of lessons from from this, whether it's, you know, whether it's sanitation and healthcare, all the way to working using a new medium like Zoom and GoTo. I mean, I think we're all, you've all been using maybe a version of this, but certainly, you know, this has become the new norm for right now. And I'm sure it will be integrated into into our new norm going forward, even after we can get together. I'm sure everybody's familiarity with this, these new formats and these new systems of communicating will will be, will be there forever. You know, making the reference back to when, you know, when nine eleven happened, you know, things, there was a very immediate change in in things happening, and then there was a gradual, gradual changes that took time. But, you know, the entire airport experience changed after that. No one could have ever imagined you wouldn't be able to walk to the gate, and that's how it is now, and it forever will be that way if you're not a passenger. So I I think there'll be changes that this, this, that COVID-19 will will cause, that will ripple through time, and some of them will be maybe more dramatic, and some of them will be will be more, will be more subtle. None of us, like you said, Cheryl, know know the answer to that right now. So obviously, being very thoughtful with everything that we do. We are all, as architects and designers, we're builders. We build things that technically last for decades, maybe longer if we're lucky, or maybe not longer. So, you know, it's not like fashion where you design it up, it's done, then we're going to design something else. Our things have a long process from start to finish development. Bigger projects even take longer. So we just have to be really thoughtful about the changes that we make within our projects, whatever phase they're in right now, because they're in all kinds of phases. There's, they're in schematic, they're in pre-designed, they're in construction, and you're getting, we're getting input from clients like, well, we need to, we need to react, we need to. So I think it's, again, another thing we need to do is be really thoughtful with those kind of reactions, knowing what we know and knowing what we don't know.
That's very true, and that'll give me a second to put a pitch for into AIA, because one of the things that we provide are are groups to get together, to share and collaborate and learn from each other about how to address some of these issues. So I'm going to go to some of the questions that people have been putting in here, and obviously, we're not going to be able to go to all of them, but some of them are are actually design related, and we will have a program strictly about design. But one question is, has anyone had any client pause or or redirect a project to rethink design around post-COVID reality?
Yeah, we're doing a joint government center for Broward and for Lauderdale, very large office project of two institutions coming together. It's all about how people work. We have been going back and forth for the last month and a half on, is it open office? Are we going to go back to cubicles? What are we going to do? How's this going to work? The the reality is, it's a public entity, and they do need different things, and the trends in private office things don't hit as much on the public sector. So probably, it's not going to make that much change. But but I think that the interior architecture aspect of our work is probably going to be the most impacted of all of the things that we do. And those things are coming up now.
So another question, has anyone benchmarked the impact on productivity in a remote production environment?
I think we're working hard.
Yes. I agree. I I agree with Bernard. We we actually benchmark everything where, you know.
Yeah, we.
Our utilization has come down a bit, but because of just, you know, some approval processes slowing down and things like that. But I, people are working all the time, and we were fearful, especially on the early design stages, when we were, we always would preach that, you know, you had to be face to face for that collaboration to happen, and it's happening anyway. I think there's a little bit, and it doesn't sound very good, right? But there's a little bit of fear in the economy too, which is making people overly cautious about producing, you know? They want to show that they're valuable. And so I think that 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 and the fact that they can't get out. I I did, I did tell my my principals last week that, you know, if we don't go back to the office and we're allowed to go out, I think that's when we're going to start seeing the productivity slow down. I think right now, because you're stuck at home with your computer, and most of us. So we'll see how he progresses, but I haven't seen a loss of productivity.
Likewise here. I mean, we've, all three of us, I'm sure, have have worked hard to create cultures within our respective offices of, you know, owners. Likewise here, I mean, we've, all three of us, I'm sure, have worked hard to create cultures within our respective offices of, you know, ownership and pride of work and pride of place. And I'm always very proud that, you know, my staff has been very flexible and despite, you know, every single person, you know, now you start to realize all the personal stories and personal family situations. And everybody has a different situation than, in my office than I have. As far as working from home, people have children, large extended families. So there's definitely been an understanding amongst my team and, you know, work needs to be done. And there's a lot of, we're doing a lot more touchpoints with our team and just making sure that people are considered, you know, that we're being very thoughtful of their situations. And I think, you know, if your employees enjoy working, which hopefully, they do most of the time, that they will continue to work. Our work in our industry, and I'm sure Bernard and Adriana can, it's very easy to monitor, you know, we have a product we produce and there's hours, there's billable hours and non-billable hours and tasks to be completed that should take certain amounts of time. So with, you know, timekeeper softwares and things, it's pretty easy to keep tabs on. And personally, I think we're being, considering the situation, our product, our utilization is good.
Great. So, sorry. Go ahead.
I have seen, I have seen on the project management side too, that some, before, I used to, you know, I used to try to get the team together to make purposely meetings to go over tasks and goals. And, but they would take it for granted because they were sitting side by side. Now it's being purposely, right? So they purposely are sitting down once a week to make sure that everybody knows what they're doing. So I think, you know, in a way, it's also being a lesson learned on the project management side, because you're not taking it for granted, you have to do it, you know, you have to purposely do it. So in that way, I think that also has helped manage the utilization and the production.
That's great. Another question is, what is something that you hope does not return as part of the new normal and how the business development side of our industry works?
Something that does not return?
Yes.
I think, I hope what does not return is all the frantic aggressiveness that is in the business culture. I would, I would love it if that did not return. I think, you know, we live in an environment where there's enough for all of us and I think that if we could focus on what has true value and be the leaders as the people who are now defining the new environment, literally, that we're gonna live in, I think if we could stay focused on that together as a profession, I think that would be great. I mean, we'll always compete with each other, but, but I don't know. You know, all of us have all different types of clients and different people that we react to. And I think there's been way too much emphasis on the bottom line and the quarter we report and the anxiety that comes with the frantic behavior that we see a lot. And maybe we're more remote now and we don't really feel it, but it feels like people have calmed down and everyone knows that things are not the way we're used to them. And I think that's an opportunity to redefine our future. And I think that's the biggest problem to me of where we've been. I would love to see that change.
I 100% agree with Bernard there. And I would also add that the, you know, yes, as architects, we need to be much, do many more things like this, Cheryl and Daphne. So thank you, of course, for putting this together, we need to share, absolutely. And, you know, the hard sell and the aggressive, you know, approaches and things like that and the competitive, the negative side of competitiveness, I would say, you know, obviously, right now, the last thing you wanna do is call somebody and try to do a hard sell on them right now when they're like, you don't even know if they have a job or if their business is falling apart. And so I think that is teaching us like a different way to reach out, to communicate, to share. I do think that's a silver lining.
That's true. Another question is, we have time for a couple more. Thinking about a new reality for business and industry, will there be new alternative services that architects might offer? Will the way we design and build spaces need to be modified?
That's a loaded question. I'd say yes to everything. You know, I think that this, that this is, again, a sample of resiliency and a holistic approach that we've been preaching and trying to push for a while. And I think we need to be pioneers in that. And we've been pioneers in that. I think just the rest of the population are catching up and understanding how it is important. So yes, I think the new design approach where the wellbeing and the resiliency, cultural resiliency and environmental resiliency is valued and taken into account will take a lot more than just architects and engineers. We're gonna have to take, rely on a lot of other specialists and scientists and resources.
Do you think that, thanks, do you think that, trying to read through, some of these questions are kind of long. Do you think that you will look at the relationship that you have with your suppliers and work a little differently with them in terms of your projects?
I mean, I will say, I've been very, I've been very happy to see what many of our vendors and suppliers have been doing as it relates just to sharing their knowledge and organizing things like this. And I think we will always have to, we strongly rely on our vendors and suppliers in the industry and our consultants. As Adriana had said, we've always reached them to collaborate and share ideas. And when all three of us, like I said, we all work in many, many different industry sectors. So there's a lot of information out there to be gathered and to be collected and to be disseminated. So I, you know, I think, I think, you know, right now, their suppliers and vendors, you know, can't, aren't stopping by to visit, you know, none of that's happening. So they've had to get very creative too. And I've been really happy to see the creativity within that, within that system. Very happy with it.
Well, I want to thank all of you. We only have two minutes left, so I want to thank all of you. Daphne had to sign off for a class that she's in, another Zoom meeting. And we, I want to thank everyone for participating. We had over 200 people register for this today. And please remember that we send a survey out afterwards. It's so helpful for us when looking at other ideas for topics in your response to the survey. So please answer that. We will, I think, have to bring you guys back again because this was such a lively discussion. And I would like to talk a little bit more about design and those kinds of issues. And a lot of the questions, we're kind of addressing that versus business development. Adriana, Jason, Bernard, thank you so much. Colleen, thank you for being at the wheel and keeping everything going. Remember that we have our Monday COVID-19 newsletter with different things that are happening in the industry. Wednesday, we have our MCAD Fun Things to Do While You're Stuck Inside newsletter. And on Friday, our Friday Facts. We continue to have almost daily continuing education Zoom classes. And remember that you have to have your continuing education completed at the end of this year. So don't forget that. So we will be doing our Design and Technology Expo, but it may be online or we're still trying to decide that. And again, thank you all very, very much. And I'll look forward to connecting with you again real soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody, thank you.
Hi, everybody.